Right, good evening, members, officers, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this special council meeting for the 5th of November. Now, before we start, can I please advise that there is no fire alarm test scheduled for this evening? And if the fire bell rings, you'll be asked to evacuate the building using the nearest fire exits and congregate on the sports ground. ...allow discussion and debate to take place without interruption. I would like to remind you that you have all made the effort to travel to this venue tonight to listen to the debate on the development plan document. I would therefore ask that you refrain from making any comments which could disrupt the meeting and impact on those sitting alongside who want to hear the arguments for and against the issue. Can I ask members to raise their hand clearly to indicate that they would like to speak so that I can ensure I do not miss anyone? On the main item, I do add, I do have a list of names that I will be calling you. Can I please ask that all members and members of the public switch their mobile phones to silent if you have not already done so? Thank you. Now, have we any apologies?
Yes, chairman, we have received apologies from councillors Jeremy Bartlett, Geoff Beck, James Podger and Sheila Ellison. We've also received apologies from Honore Alderman, Jo Mooney and Geoff Finley.
And do we have any declarations of interest?
Thank you, chairman. We have received, in respect of item number three, the council tax discount for vacant property. All members, except councillors Howard Berstow and Nick Good, have completed an application for a grant of a dispensation in relation to any beneficial interest in land within the authority's area. The monitoring officer has granted the dispensation to allow all those members that applied for a dispensation to speak and vote on this item. In respect of item four, councillor Alan Macrow has declared a personal interest in that he lives opposite one of the sites, T H E zero zero nine, identified as a housing site in the D P D. I also understand that all members have in fact been lobbied in respect of item number four. I don't know whether any members have any other declarations of interest.
No, thank you. So we move straight on to item number four, council tax discount for vacant property. And could I ask councillor Croft, please, to introduce the item?
Thank you, chairman. In 2012, council agreed that council tax would become payable after a property was vacant for more than 28 days. The council tax appeals panel recently decided that the wording of the policy might be open to legal challenge. This policy now needs clarifying, and the change of wording proposed in this document clarifies the policy, removes the possibility of any legal challenge and restates council's original intent. I recommend the motion to council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Croft. Does that find a second at please? Do you wish to speak? Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Therefore, can I put it straight to the vote, please, for the recommendation as set out in page five of your agenda? All those in favour, please show. And against? Thank you, that is carried. So we move straight on to agenda item number five, the West Berkshire Housing Site allocations, D P D, proposed submission, on page 11 of your agenda. Oh, yes. Before moving on to the site allocations paper, I would like to clarify the rules of debate for this item, which have been agreed by both group leaders. It has been agreed that councillor Alan Law and councillor Alan Macrow will be permitted to speak for up to 10 minutes on this item, including introducing any amendments they may have. All other members will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. Now, could I please ask councillor Law to introduce the item?
Thank you, chairman. Chairman, if I may, all the members have got a supplementary item for council in front of them. Please note, this is a small factual amendment referring to page three of appendix F. I'd ask members, please, to note. Chairman, members, members of the public, tonight's council is not about housing sites or sites for gypsies, or about parking standards or housing in the countryside. Now, even though that's what it says in all your papers, make no mistake, tonight's votes are all about democracy and who ultimately has control of our local development plans. So will we hand over control to developers? Or via appeals to an unelected planning inspectorate? Or will it be the control be with the elected members of the council here in this chamber? And here, I want to stress, we are the elected representatives of the people of West Berkshire as a whole. We're not simply, as individuals, representatives of narrow sections of our community, be they in the eastern urban area, or the rural villages, or in Thiel or in Thatcher. I more than most understand the local pressures of not in my backyard. I respect any member who says such and such a site is not ideal for whatever reason. I respect their right to represent their local electorate. However, I will have no respect for any member who then says he or she does not wish to support a plan for the district as a whole. That, my opinion, would be abrogating their democratic responsibility to also represent the people of West Berkshire as a whole, and without a plan to expose us all to a planning free-for-all. Now, tonight is not the end of the process. That will happen in nine months' time before an inspector had a public examination hearing. But tonight is an important milestone. In fact, for individual sites, the end of the process will happen even later, at the planning application stage, and for some sites, that could be as much as three, four and five years away. Tonight is taking place, after three years of process, analysing submissions from landowners for over 43,000 houses. Tonight's taking place after much gathering of technical data on traffic, on landscapes, infrastructure, flooding, impact studies, and also then the largest public consultation we in West Berkshire ever had, 8,500 responses. All of that technical data and details of the consultations are in a 3,000-plus addendum that all you members will have received. I'd like to congratulate the officers for the last two and a half to three years' hard work and their diligence in putting that all together. Tonight is taking place also after every member of this council had been briefed and consulted, often more than once, over the last 18, 12 to 18 months, and after we did numerous parish briefings and also numerous detailed examinations by the 12 members of the cross-party planning advisory group. So having said all of that, I got to say I have no truck whatsoever with anyone, with anyone who says we did not prepare this plan properly. So following all that work, we have tonight before us the council, or I'd like to say the people's, proposed submission for just under 1,600 houses across 29 sites. And I'd like to remind everyone, this proposed submission will still be subject to one further formal public consultation before it's submitted to the Secretary of State in early 2016. So what are the details of this evening? Well, I'm not going to go into all the details, but in summary, first, we have the housing sites aligned as per the core strategy from 2012 into the four spatial areas of the A O N B, the eastern urban area, the East Kennet Valley and the Newbury and Thatcher urban areas. The second item on the agenda is the revised gypsy and travellers policies. Now here, our detailed technical analysis indicated we have fewer travellers transiting through West Berkshire than we had previously allowed for. That information therefore allowed us to immediately increase our numbers of permanent pitches, as required by law, by enabling us to reduce the number of transit sites, replace them with permanent pitches. And so we avoid any overall increase in pitch numbers until well into the next decade. Thirdly, we have tidied up our housing in the countryside policies, last revised back in 2004. The existing policies and guidelines, where I think most of us will agree, too open to interpretation, lacking clarity and had an overemphasis on formulaic sizing increases. Now, whilst keeping the important emphasis on proportionality, we are also looking more at how the plan you build or extension sits in its location, and we've tightened up on definitions such as structurally sound or structurally unsound. Fourthly, we've added more flexibility to our residential parking standards for new developments. Previously, we've been constrained by a standard national policy of having just one and a half cars per house across the district. First introduced, do you remember him, Two Jags Prescott? Now, we've said that houses with more bedrooms probably should have more parking spaces, and that rural areas should be different from urban areas that have more readily available public transport. Now, let me add a little bit, chairman, to the policy I suspect most of you are here to hear debated, the sites allocation. As I said, we started with submissions for over 43,000 houses from several hundred sites. By the time we came to last year's consultation, we had whittled this down to a preferred list of 39 sites with approximately 2,300 houses. Plus, we presented details of another 63 sites we had evaluated but not preferred for various reasons, and we explained those reasons in the consultation document. So our final submission tonight is for 29 sites with just under 1,600 houses. Significantly, following the consultation and more evaluation and mitigation work, we have removed 12 sites from the original consultation, the largest being Pinsons Lane in Tilehurst, two sites in Thiel representing 138 houses, and a group of sites in North Hungerford for 90 houses. We've also brought forward two sites in South Newbury for later in the plan, and two smaller sites in Lambourne and Hermitage. We've also made some minor adjustments to some site densities, some up and some down, based on further evidence since the consultation to reflect surrounding densities and character of the area. Chairman, if I may, one final piece of context. This site allocation, D P D, was mandated back in 2012 in order to complete our core strategy and to complete our local plan 2006 to 2026. That was the brief when this D P D was started, and to complete that brief, I should only be presenting approximately 1,300 additional houses this evening, not the 1,600 on the table. But events move on. Our core strategy was based on housing projections produced back in 2006, 2007, and these have been continually challenged by developers. We have just completed a new, the government-mandated Berkshire-wide strategic housing assessment. This is a technical assessment which indicates we need to build at a faster rate, so it's up from the 525 per annum...
One minute, councillor Law, please.
Thank you, I'm almost there. So it's up from 525 per annum of the core strategy to around 665 per annum. We have also recently lost an important appeal which questioned our rate of build and our five-year land supply. As things stand at the moment, given that appeal, we may not have a valid local plan to help defend these residents against unwanted developments. So this D P D tonight not only completes the old local plan, but starts to address the rate of build we will need from here on in. That's why, chairman members, this D P D is so vital, so important. Without it, we will have an insufficient five-year land supply and hence no local plan to protect us. Chairman members, it's vital for the whole district that this report is adopted as a whole, and I still propose.
Thank you. Does that find a second at please? Councillor Croft?
Yes, chairman, I second this...
Do you wish to speak now?
No, I'll reserve my right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I will go. I do have a full list of members who wish to speak, and I will start off with councillor Macrow, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to move an amendment to remove four sites from the D P D. That's T H A zero two five...
Could I just tell you there for a moment, please, councillor Macrow, as I understand there are some implications on any amendments? Could I ask our legal person to explain, please?
Thank you. An amendment cannot be moved to any motion before full council where the effect of that proposal would be to negate the content of the original motion. Any proposal which seeks to remove or add sites indeed, which are currently detailed within section two of the D P D document, will have the effect of negating the original motion. Therefore, council cannot accept any proposed amendment which would seek to remove any sites.
I would dispute...
Please continue.
...negating the proposal, Mr. Chairman. And also, I have done my arithmetic, that with these four sites removed, we would still meet...
Continue.
We would still meet the core strategy requirement of 10,000, at least 10,500 homes, and we'd still meet the objective needs assessment of 665 per year until financial year 2324. So I will reluctantly accept your ruling, Mr. Chairman, but I do dispute the reasons for it. Could I now go on then to speak on the motion? We do indeed need homes to be provided for our residents, for our residents' children, for people moving into the district and so on. We also need to meet our housing targets as laid out in the core strategy and also from the recent objective needs assessment. However, there are several problems with this D P D. In Newbury, there are valid concerns that the 225 homes proposed on the southeast Newbury sites, in combination with those built at Sandelford, will put a major extra load on services and on the roads. Sites Newbury 47B and C, which are in the gap between Greenham and Newbury, were rejected at the preferred option stage. This means that residents who objected to these sites would have been happy that they were rejected and would not have responded to the consultation. On the other hand, developers and planning consultants would have responded, of course. This means that the consultation was misleading and leads to a similar situation of the one the council previously had with Sandelford. Development of these sites would seriously affect the individual character of Greenham and would, to quote, "remove the green" from Greenham. Sites N E W 47B and 47C should not therefore be allocated in this D P D. I'd like to move on to Thatcher. Residents believe that Thatcher has done its bit, and this is confirmed in a statement on page 46 of your papers, that the core strategy does not identify Thatcher for significant growth in this plan period due to rapid expansion in recent years. Nevertheless, Thatcher was required to accommodate 900 new homes in this plan period. The information from officers shows that this period, so that this number has already been exceeded, there's also ongoing development of infill sites. So during this plan period, Mr. Chairman, that number is going to be greatly exceeded. Therefore, the 85 homes in Lower Way, sites T H A zero twenty-five, is not necessary. They should not be allocated. You will all be aware, from the people here this evening and from the emails we've all received, that this field is very important for the local community, heavily used for informal leisure, contains six stoppiles used by the public, and local residents also don't understand why 85 homes here will be acceptable when a site nearby was rejected, a planning application was rejected, on the grounds extra traffic from 15 homes could not be accommodated. I'd like to move on to the eastern area. There's been a lot of housing development in the Tilehurst and Purley-on-Thames areas in recent years, and infrastructure has not kept up. The only road access is to the west and the south of the narrow and bendy Sullen Hill and the busy Langley Hill. Residents therefore have valid concerns that the extra traffic, or 145 more homes will cause traffic congestion to become much worse. They also have valid concerns about pressure on local services. There's also been a lot of concern for residents of Tilehurst and Purley about sites for housing being allocated in sensitive areas near the A O N B. I therefore welcome the rejection of the centre of site at Long Lane Blackthorn Close and the site at Pinsons Hill. However, I'm concerned that the Pinsons Hill site may come back despite the well-warranted concerns about traffic from the site having to use the same lane as that used to access the new Ikea store. Also concerns about the 125 homes proposed for Calcon, close to M4 Junction 12, will exacerbate existing traffic problems that likely to become much worse when the new Ikea store is opened. Also likely to have pressure on already stretched services, such as the doctor of surgery in nearby Thiel. I'd like to come on to Thiel, Mr. Chairman. The core strategy says Thiel would need to undergo a period of consolidation to provide an opportunity for facilities and services to be upgraded if the Lakeside site is developed. This site already has permission for 350 homes, and a new application for 325 has just been submitted. The 70 home proposed for the field between the A340 and the Green, opposite the Lakeside site, on top of the 325 or 350, likely to develop the Lakeside, will increase the size of Thiel by a third and threaten its village character. Thiel residents are very concerned about the effect of more housing on local services. One resident recently told me he has to wait 12 weeks to get an appointment with his doctor. Site T H E zero zero nine was also the site preferred by the parish council and by many residents for the new primary school. Allocating the site for housing precludes its use for a school. No sites for additional homes should therefore be allocated in Thiel, and site T H E zero zero nine should be removed from the D P D. But to move on to the East Kennet Valley, where Burfield Common, in common with many other places in the district, has expanded dramatically in recent years and facilities have not kept up. There's therefore, a lot of concern is now being asked to accommodate two sites with a total of 160 homes. This is exacerbated by the prospect of another 90 homes at Fernands Park Farm site if the Home Court, sorry, if the High Court does not overturn the inspector's decision to allow the appeal by its developer. Moving on to the A O N B, the Newbury roadside in Lambourne, L I M zero one five, was not even considered at all at the preferred option stage. This means that this site was not consulted on at all. As with the two Newbury sites I mentioned, for consultation to mean anything, this site should not be allocated. Pangborn shows many of the problems of services and infrastructure experienced by nearby Purley-on-Thames and Tilehurst. Another 35 homes are going to make those problems even worse. I'd like to move on now to employment land because I'm disappointed the council is not in a position to include the many homes proposed to be included on the redevelopment of the London Road industrial estate in the D P D. If the council moved faster on the site, we would probably have been able to save one or more of the greenfield sites from being allocated for housing. I'm also disappointed the council has still not carried out its promised review of protected employment land. That may also have allowed some of this employment land to be really reallocated for housing, saving greenfield sites. In conclusion, I ask you to vote against adoption of this D P D so that it can be modified to remove sites Newbury 47B, Newbury 47C, Thatcher 25, Thiel 9 and Lambourne 15. This will address the specific problems with allocating those sites I have mentioned. It also helps to reduce the strain on infrastructure and services that extra housing will inevitably cause. My calculations show that the core strategy target of at least 10,500 homes could still be met, also that the objective needs allocation requirement of 665 homes could be met until well into the next local plan period. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Before we move on, I do notice that some people have arrived late, and in the event of our councillors, could I please ask our legal person now to explain the fact of that matter? Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. If any member has arrived after the item has commenced in effect and missed any part of the speeches, then that member may speak to the item, but they are precluded from voting in respect of the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I now ask councillor Past, please?
Thank you, chairman. It wasn't my intention, chairman, to speak specifically on any of the sites, but to reinforce some of the points made by councillor Law as to our reasons for being here this evening. But before I do that, I would just take issue with something councillor Macrow said, that of consultation being misleading. This is the most comprehensive consultation we have ever undertaken. It has taken place over nearly 12 months. We had 8,000 responses. Officers went through each response very, very carefully, culminating in our being in this room this evening. A little history lesson, forgive me, but West Berkshire and its predecessor, Newbury District Council, has had a plan for planning since the early 80s. In the early times, it actually only applied in Newbury and to Thatcher, but since 1993, it covered the whole of our district. Now, we are governed by directives as to the number of houses that we need to build, and I'm going to talk in general terms about a five-year housing land supply, although that's being defined as an annual build rate which equates to the same thing by modern dictate. But the importance of a local plan cannot be underestimated. Aylesbury Vale, I gather, for reasons that I am not going to go into, do not have a local plan. They have several communities, I gather, that have neighbourhood development plans, as Mortimer has at the moment. That, in short, means that that community is saying how many houses it wants and where it wants them. But because it does not have a local plan, developing... But because it does not have a local plan, developers are circling like sharks, and planning permissions are being granted left, right and centre. You heard from councillor Law that when we went out for the call for sites, we received enough land to build in the region of forty-three thousand houses, way in excess by a major factor of some twenty than we need to build. Now, that shows, although not all those sites would be developable because of flooding and the AWE exclusion zone and a lot of other reasons I haven't got time to go into, there are an awful lot which have a hope value. And if we do not adopt a local plan, let me assure you that any resident here tonight, your land won't have any control on, in terms of the number of houses. We will lose control totally of the whole district in planning terms. It will be planning by appeal. We've already been challenged. We've been challenged in Burfield by developers who say that we do not have a five-year land supply for housing. Now, we dispute that, and we are taking the relevant steps to ensure that we can dispute what the planning inspector was told. But nevertheless, it just shows the sort of pressure that not just we in West Berkshire, but the whole country is under to build housing. Because I'm guilty. I had three children, and now each child has a need for a house. And the population is growing. Chairman, I could go on at length, I'm not allowed to, I know, I'm very limited in time, but I cannot overemphasise the importance of this local plan in whatever form. And let me just reassure you, we are voting later, Chairman, for a further consultation which will go to the planning inspector, who will go through everything with a fine toothcomb. Chairman, before you cut me off, I will sit down now and thank you for your time.
Councillor Brian, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And now, curiously, I have a lot of sympathy for councillor Macro's point of view. I too would like to see some sites deleted, changed, and to have another round of consultation so that everybody is satisfied. Developers, the public and ourselves are fully happy with all the proposals. In West Berkshire, Mr. Chairman, we pride ourselves, and I think we pride ourselves, that development is plan-led. The public and developers all know what is likely to happen. We don't get nasty surprises that we get a developer putting forward a proposal for a site for another hundred houses. It's a surprise, and he gets it, and we're all very upset. We don't want to see that. We want everybody to know what is actually going to happen in the future. And to achieve that, we have had the core strategy and now the work here on the site allocations, which brings some certainty as to how development is actually going to go. Now, these plans ensure that we have this five-year land supply, which is most important, to ensure that developers don't come along and claim that we haven't got a five-year land supply, and if they go to appeal, they say we haven't, and the inspector will go through that with a toothcomb, and we have to prove that we have got it. So it would be nice to go back and have another go at this. We'd have another round consultation, and I guess it would take us a few months to get the papers together. We would then go out to consultation with the public. We'd probably get eight thousand more responses in a few more months. And I guess to get through that process of amending what we have now, maybe one year, maybe two years or something like that. Now, in the meantime, we're using up our land supply, and developers will be coming around to us, and they'll be rightly saying, you have not got a five-year land supply, therefore I want my development to go ahead. And we've already seen in Fir Tree, in the Fernlands proposal, that inspectors are getting to the stage when they're saying, well, you've got this five-year land supply, but we're not quite so certain about it now, and we need this extra sixteen hundred houses to make sure that we have got that land. So if we turn down this plan, if we delay it, if we amend it, then we are in some very difficult territory where we no longer be plan-led, we will be developer-led, we won't know what's going to happen, we will be like Aylesbury District Council. We might as well quite tear up the core strategy, we might as well tear up the papers we have in front of us, and let developers develop as they wish, where they wish. If that is what you want, vote against it. But if that is not what you want, and you want us to be plan-led, then please vote in favour of the proposals you have in front of us this evening. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Brian. Could I ask councillor Webster, please?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I was first elected to this council back in two thousand and three. The result came through in the early hours of the morning, and after being congratulated on the result, a wise man said to me, Emma, whatever you do in your time as a councillor, don't forget the people who put you in your place to be able to make the decisions you make. You are voting on behalf of all of them. Over the last thirteen years, those words have stuck with me and remain as true now as they did then. I am privileged to represent the residents of Birchcops and thank them all for the ongoing faith and trust that they have had in me to do the right thing, to make the right decision. I am sure what I am about to say, other members will say is equally true of their own wards, but tonight I am taking the opportunity to speak about my own. The residents in my ward are passionate, hard-working people, old and young, rich and poor, all proud of the community in which they live. They are not anti-development full stop, they are just anti-the wrong type of development, in the wrong place without the right infrastructure. It is due to the hard work of these residents and many others in the audience tonight that this meeting is taking place now, rather than December last year as originally planned, due to the sheer volume and detail of correspondence submitted as part of the consultation. During last summer, from July to September, three campaign groups were active in the area: Save Pinsons Hill, Love Tyllhurst and Keep Tyllhurst Green. Each played their part, helped spread the message about the importance of participating in the process. The commitment and passion from those leading these groups was great. For the people involved in the Pinsons Hill campaign, this was not a new fight, but simply the next battle to be had, after the previous planning application was refused and the developers' appeal rejected. From the Keep Tyllhurst Green campaign grew the desire to form a neighbourhood plan group. An application was made to the council for designation of an area in February two thousand and fifteen, and this was eventually approved in June this year. Five sites were put forward in my ward as proposed development sites, and the response from my community was overwhelming. Five thousand one hundred and ninety separate responses were submitted. In addition, a petition containing two thousand two hundred and thirty-six signatures was submitted. To set that in context for you all, the electorate of Birchcops Ward is six thousand one hundred and forty. We had two successes: the rejection of a Pinsons Hill site for a number of reasons that I know my colleagues will cover off in more detail, and land to the east of Long Lane and south of Blackthorn Close, due to flooding risk and the highways' impact on Solam Hill. And I am grateful that that has been recognised. However, my frustrations lie with the three sites that still remain, two at Stonhams Farm and the other at Clements Mead. The situation at Clements Mead is even worse than that consulted upon, as the number of houses proposed for that site has increased since consultation, and many of the technical arguments raised by my residents during consultation, I believe, have not been adequately addressed. The neighbourhood plan will identify sites suitable for development with the associated infrastructure. I wish the true power was set out as part of a localism act and the neighbourhood plan process had been allowed to take place. It is with a heavy heart that I will be voting this evening, both against the eastern urban spatial area and also the development plan document. Whilst I do not dispute that the council needs to have a development plan document to prevent developers from wanting to build everywhere, I believe it has to be the right document, one which contains the sites that I have already spoken about within eastern urban area, is one that I simply cannot support. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Could I ask councillor Pick, please?
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Chairman. My remarks relate to Newbury. Earlier last year, when I was a Newbury Town councillor, I was commissioned on behalf of Newbury Town Council to engage in consultation with planning officers on the DPD as it affects Newbury. No fewer than eighty-four sites were presented to us by developers, and through the efforts of the planning officers, these have now been reduced to six sites in Newbury where significant development is proposed. Two are located in North Newbury and four in South Newbury. In addition, there are four minor amendments to the Newbury settlement boundary. I have been impressed throughout the process by the very thorough and systematic way in which the planning officers have identified and weighed up all the relevant factors in judging each of these sites, as councillor Law has already alluded to, including all the relevant issues of local environment, heritage, topography, access, community rights and neighbouring settlements. Examples of changes that have taken place are that the Hill Road site, which was very contentious, has been rejected, and the proposal to site houses in Bath Road in Spene was altered so that the existing allotments could be conserved. I therefore have no hesitation in recommending this DPD as far as it concerns Newbury for adoption. Now, as has been referred to, three of the six sites lie in the boundary land between Newbury and Greenham. And as already been suggested, it is important that this green buffer is maintained for ecological reasons and in order to respect the relative characters of Newbury and Greenham. I am content, having looked at the sites, that although it has become necessary to propose development on the edges of this land, a substantial arc of open space between Newbury and Greenham will be preserved and will remain as an effective green buffer and will be protected from development by being defined as outside the Newbury settlement boundary. Moreover, the ancient woodland east of New Road in Greenham will be untouched, and the existing public rights away will be preserved. Being content with those, I shall be supporting the DPD. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Pick. Councillor Lundey, did you wish to add your name to the list of people who wish to speak? Right, thank you. I'll take you in order, if I may. Now, could I ask councillor Croft, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I speak as a Thatcham councillor. I've lived in Thatcham South for thirty years, and the DPD process has been very important because it's rejected eight sites and fourteen hundred homes in Thatcham. Thatcham is subject to enormous pressure from developers to build. I learnt this week of another site with a proposal for an eight hundred further homes on top of the fourteen hundred rejected in the DPD. We must have a DPD to protect Thatcham from large-scale speculative development. I am very aware of the Lowaway Field, which is included within the DPD. I know the traffic at Rushat is very, very heavy. I do my best to avoid it, but I'll be honest, occasionally I'm in the Rushat traffic. I know the Lowaway Field site is next door to the Nature Discovery Centre. I love the Nature Discovery Centre, I think it's a great and wonderful place, and I voted for the deal which allowed Bebaut to take over and protect and care for it in the long term. Lowaway Field is not a perfect site from a planning viewpoint. The DPD process would be very easy if there were perfect sites everywhere. From a planning viewpoint, it's not a perfect site, but to be blunt, Lowaway Field is the least worst site in Thatcham. As such, I will be voting for the spatial plans for Newbury and Thatcham, and I will be voting for the DPD.
Thank you, councillor Croft. Could I ask councillor Bale, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman and members, I've lived in Pangwall now for thirty years, and I'm objecting to the site PAN002, which is the preferred site put forward for development in Pangborn. It's land adjacent to Pangborn Hill, but I believe it is not viable in planning terms due to the impact on the North Wessex Downs area of outstanding natural beauty. It has poor road access and particularly poor pedestrian access, and there has been a lot of opposition from local residents. Hundred and thirty-two objections to the consultation and a petition with two hundred and seventeen signatures. Remember, Pangborn is a village, it's not an urban area like the eastern area or Thatcham. Site is outside the Pangborn settlement boundary, and it's in the AONB on the edge of downland overlooking the Thames Valley. There is evidence of protected species on and near to the site which could impact development. The residents have raised some specific concerns relating to the proposed development would have on the local infrastructure. Traffic and pedestrian access. Pangborn Hill slopes deeply downhill as it enters the village, and in the traffic censors last month, there were about twenty-eight thousand vehicle movements. And in the thirty-mile-per-hour area, which is adjacent to the site, three vehicles per day exceeded sixty miles per hour and fifty-five exceeded fifty miles per hour. That's per day. So an increase in traffic movements, if the site is developed, would also add to the traffic congestion at the dangerous junction of Pangborn Hill and the A329 Tidmarsh Road. Walking to the village from the site will be particularly hazardous, even with the proposed construction of a new footpath along part of the route. There have been accidents to pedestrians on the existing narrow footway, including wing mirror swipes, at least three in the last eighteen months, which have been caused by vehicles passing very close to the curb line, and therefore their wing mirrors overhang the footway. Wastewater is another issue. Thames waters state that the system has capacity to cope with an additional thirty-eight dwellings. Residents at the foot of Pangborn Hill would disagree with that, based on the frequency of sewage flooding in their properties. Residents with significant qualifications and experience in civil engineering explain that this problem is due to several reasons, not just the capacity of the pipes, but the topography of the ground and the fact that the Victorian pipes are old and therefore potential to snag rubbish, and that's what leads to the blockages which have occurred. And their view is that the only mitigation is not to allow any more development in the area. My own comments are that Pangborn is designated as a rural service centre and has good facilities. However, development outside the settlement boundary is constrained by three rivers and the area of outstanding natural beauty. But the village is not against development. The number of dwellings in the village has been increasing on an annual basis due to infilling, replacement of large properties with numbers of smaller properties and conversion of business premises to residential. Indeed, some thirty-eight dwellings have been delivered, or some are still in construction, in the last two years. But the need is for more affordable units. We've only delivered six in that period of time, with four more under construction. The proposals for PAN002, the proposed density of thirty-five dwellings is approximately fourteen dwellings per hectare and quite out of keeping with the properties in the neighbouring areas of Riverview Road, Pangborn Road and Beer Court Road. One of the criteria for site assessment, as designated by the officers, is access to footways. The proposal for PAN002 does include construction of an area of new footpath, but this would be accessed by steps, and pedestrians would then have to cross Pangborn Hill twice, only once with the assistance of a traffic island, and walk along a narrow footway. And I therefore challenge- And I therefore challenge the officer comment that this is a safe route and ask them to walk that route with me and imagine that they were pushing a buggy or a pram or using a mobile walking aid. Pangborn Primary School is at the far end of the village, some three-quarters of a mile from the site. Current bus service, which isn't very frequent, is under threat due to potential withdrawal of the subsidy from Oxfordshire County Council. So in conclusion, I do not consider this site to be suitable for affordable housing or for the proposed number of dwellings. But I do absolutely concur with the need for a local development plan. Without such a plan, we would have no control whatsoever over where homes would be built or indeed the numbers to be built. So therefore, I will support the DPD as a whole, but I will continue to oppose the proposed development of PAN 002 and particularly at the planning inquiry, which is due to be held next April. Thank you, Chair.
Right, councillor Simpson, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members. I represent the parish of Coldash and have lived there for thirty-six years. I object to site Newbury 045, Cody Farm, because I believe it's not viable in planning terms due to a considerable and proven flood risk, considerable impact on an acutely sensitive landscape of ancient fields, ancient woodlands, wildlife heritage sites, and poor road access requiring the destruction of ancient hedgerows and tree canopies. And the strength of opposition by local residents is considerable, and the petition was assembled of more than six hundred signatures. In addition, I object to Coldash 006, St Finian's Farm, because I believe it's not viable in planning terms as there's a considerable impact on the sensitive landscape for all residents of the escarpment and the loss of a view from the road called the Ridge to Bucklebury across the Kennet Valley. There is limited infrastructure, I mean just basic utilities, no pavements, at the extreme margins of this settlement. There is complete car dependency, and I mean complete, one hundred percent. You would not ride, you would not care to use any other form of transport. And the traffic conditions associated with nearby St Finian's School are absolutely acute. There's perhaps three or four hundred metres of cars associated with the pickup of pupils from the school each day. And the strength of opposition from local residents is enormous. I do, however, agree with the need for and the principle of a local development plan. Without such a plan, as has been well recorded tonight, we'd have no control whatsoever over where homes should be built or indeed the number of homes to be built. With such a planning free-for-all, the sites I'm concerned about would undoubtedly be built on and probably in an uncontrollable manner. Also, many more houses than we would want would be able to cross the whole district. I'll therefore support the DPD as a whole, but I will continue to oppose development of Newbury 045, Cody Farm, and Coldash 006, St Finian's Farm. I'll also object to these sites being included in Newbury and Thatcham spatial area and will abstain on the vote for that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Could I now ask councillor Chadley, please?
Thank you, Chairman. As the ward member for Birchcops, I would like to say a few general words on the eastern urban area. Development and infrastructure should go hand in hand, and there is an impression within our area that the infrastructure lags far behind. When we actually make improvements, for example on the Bath Road, this is not seen as a way to ease congestion, but rather a way to increase development and traffic on the roads and fill up any spare capacity. I find myself asking, is it our policy to just stay one step behind demand to always ensure we maintain gridlock? Moving on to the DPD, we have heard that phrase, NIMBY, not in my backyard. And I'm sure a lot of my fellow councillors here think this is what the objections are all about. This is more than that. It's not in people's backyards; it's in their front yards, their roads, and their fields. The three sites put forward affect more than just a handful of people. I don't know how much more evidence we need of that. Over two thousand objection letters, that represented twenty-five percent of all the consultation comments, all are gathering here tonight by the concerned residents of the so-called eastern urban area. Surely, the current policy of rewriting settlement boundaries to rope in the next available and empty field is flawed. Birchcops are seen, bit by bit, field upon field, turned into urban school. Parts of London have more parks and green spaces than my ward. The effect of building house upon house is cumulative and changes the outlook permanently for all of us. I believe we have reached a saturation point, not only for traffic congestion on the roads, but also for development of houses without the natural boundaries and green gaps. I would just like to mention Pinsons Hill, EUA 007. I welcome the fact that this last great open space between Birchcops and Cowcot has been spared, for now. That does appear to be the operative word, for now. The reason for rejecting the inclusion appears to be due to the traffic from Ikea. Well, let me tell you, it is more than the traffic that is the issue of this site; it is fundamentally flawed. It is clearly within the full report why it was rejected. I took some finding deep in the appendix, but here it is. Access issues not on the bus network, poorly related to the settlement, water supply and waste issues, significant archaeological finds, flooding, and so on. I would urge officers and members to reflect on these real issues pointed out by over a thousand objections made and ensure that should this site ever come before us again, it is rejected permanently, once and for all. As we all know, we should keep our points brief and concise, so I'll conclude here. I urge you to consider if we have chosen the right path in finding these houses, or if not only the selection process within the eastern urban area is flawed, but also within the whole of West Berkshire.
Could I ask councillor Bridgman, please?
Chairman, thank you. I'm going to start by doing something I haven't done before, which is correct councillor Pask on one item. A neighbourhood development plan doesn't mean that the community determines the number of houses. What it does mean is the community determines where those houses will go. As members will have seen from the papers, uniquely of the settlements identified in the DPD, Mortimer's housing number of a hundred and ten will be delivered through its neighbourhood development plan if, of course, the NDP is adopted following a local referendum next year. So I am in the rather enviable position amongst my colleagues, along with councillor Locke, of representing a ward that contains a settlement boundary but we're able to let the community decide on where the housing will go. Now, lest anyone should think that an NDP is a simple way to avoid development, let me disabuse them. If it is adopted, the Mortimer NDP will actually deliver slightly more housing than was originally tasked in this exercise. And the process is neither simple nor easy. The unpaid volunteers on the Mortimer steering group have put in a vast amount of effort over the last two years to get the plan to where it is now. So the NDP in Mortimer will control site selection in the same way, as part, an integral part of the local plan, in the same way as this draft DPD seeks to do for the entire district. So what if the NDP and the DPD were not to be adopted? Well, in Mortimer, at the call for site stage, there were seven sites that were identified. Of those, four went forward as assessed with potential, with a total possible housing number of three hundred and ninety-two. If the NDP didn't exist and if this DPD isn't passed, in my view, we wouldn't now be looking at one site with a hundred and ten houses, which is what the NDP will seek to deliver, but multiple sites with multiple and far larger number of houses. As councillor has said, not having a DPD means a free-for-all in planning and planning appeals and planning by developers, not planning by the authority. Two final points. First, I want to emphasise how vital it is going to be that we get the infrastructure planning sorted as part of this process. Second, purely on ward matter, I want to welcome the change in the gypsies, travellers and travelling showpeople part of the DPD to moving from what was Clappers Farm site to what is now the Clappers Farm area of search. Officers are going to be aware of the views expressed locally, and they will also be aware of the concerns to be raised about the legal position regarding some of the land in question. I look forward to a continuing dialogue as we move towards 2021 and that particular delivery times. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Bridgman. Councillor Linden, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I fully support my fellow councillors, Emma Webster and Anthony Chadley. And I also have the privileges of serving the residents of Birchcops. I'll first start with Pinsons Hill. I know we've got it down as rejected, but it will be reviewed in terms of the traffic impact of Ikea. All the councillors have received an email from Philip Villiers, who is from the Indigo Planning for Excellence, representing the developers, saying why we should include Pinsons Hill in the DPD. They may submit a planning application, and somebody believes they will, in the not-too-distant future. In a couple of years' time, when the impact of Ikea is coming out, they may have a second bite of the cherry. But I suspect there will be planning applications because they're desperate for development for the amount of money they've brought in for buying the site and fighting the appeal. And we've got to guard against the two hundred and eighty-five houses there on that site. So that most probably will be coming in before the next general election. I support our residents' concerns, and I'd like to thank you for the great response from the eastern urban area. But we need to have game changers, not just petitions, so we can go on what we've seen here on all these sites, not just Pinsons Hill, to making sure that the planning inspector has proper planning grounds to make changes to these sites which we don't want, both in the sites in Stonemans Farm and also in Clements Mead. And I'm be fighting and supporting you all the way. We need again a high response, and I fully support Save Pinsons Hill and Keep Tarloes Green, and they will also help in getting a really accurate response that we need to go again. And whilst our car parking standards are better than before, the ridiculous numbers coming from the previous Labour government, it needs to be accurate to reflect the actual car ownership in Birchcops, Cowcot, Pearlie and Westwood Ward. Now, I shall be abstaining on all the spatial strategies because I can't see any other point of doing it, but I'll be voting against the eastern urban spatial strategy and also voting against the DPD. I will be supporting our residents. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Linden. Can I now call upon councillor Dillon, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As a resident of Thatcham for over thirty years, I've seen our town take more than its fair share of development. Many residents and councillors over the years have said that development and infrastructure haven't gone hand in hand. And even officers of this council have said that the town needs a time for consolidation. Now, therefore, to see the addition of a further eighty-five properties being built in the town, as outlined in this DPD, is contrary to those opinions and contrary to the two thousand four hundred people who signed the Save the Low Way Field petition. I want to go on record to say that I am in favour of housing for those adults who live with their parents in their thirties, for people who have to rent because they can't afford to buy, and for those people who need social housing but find that stock numbers are too low. But I am not in favour of housing without proper planning and proper infrastructure in place, and in Thatcham, we have not had that to date. We've asked our fellow councillors, via an amendment that's been struck down, to exclude the Thatcham site as well as others. Nobody in this chamber is against having a DPD, but we want one that's right for our towns and for the whole community. To frame the debate, to frame the debate that you can vote against your spatial strategy but then you have to support the whole DPD undermines voting against your spatial strategy. If you vote against your spatial strategy but vote in favour of the DPD as a whole, you are voting against your community's wishes, and you need to take that on board when you cast your votes later today. Now, I just want to finish, Chair, by saying that the town needs a neighbourhood development plan. We've just had an explanation of what it does contain and what it doesn't contain, and we need to look at all the sites across our town so that when we do build houses, we build them with the right infrastructure and that also that we get real planning gain from those sites. We get proper schools, we get proper roads, we get proper town centre facilities, proper open spaces, not a site like Low Way where we will have increased traffic, we will be building next to a triple S I site, we will lose public footpaths and lose public immunity without any planning around the wider impacts on the town. The Town Council Planning Committee is against this site going into the DPD. The residents of the town are against it, and so am I, Mr Chairman, and I will not vote for a DPD that contains it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dillon. Could I ask councillor Sumner, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I will be probably briefer than some of my colleagues. I'm objecting to the two sites within Cowcot Ward, and I do so on behalf of my colleagues and I do so on behalf of the parish. EUA 025 and 026, corresponding policy numbers HSA 12 and 13, would indicate the need for the reason of a hundred and thirty-five homes. Whilst I would agree with the comments that have been made about homes being required, I do believe that these are not viable in planning terms. There is an impact potential on the area which is recognisable for potential flooding. But most importantly, to all residents of the area, there is a major impact potential on the roads. The A4 and the M4 junction 12 are known to be heavily congested, and there have been ongoing works now for a considerable length of time, and we look to further works carrying on. Whilst those works have been welcomed by many, we have yet to see the full benefit of them, and we have yet to realise what impact Ikea development will have. We look to not been able to see that until summer of 2016 as an opening point, and I would suspect from there on, once they've had an opening period and then Christmas, it will be at least another six to eight months before we really know what sort of level of traffic we're talking about. Clearly, there's going to be a further impact potential from any sites developed in the surrounding areas. We've heard of Stonemans Farm, we've heard of the potential, although on hold at the moment, of Pinsons. Development, EUA 025, which is the site running adjacent to the M4, will certainly leave no room for any future expansion to that highway, should it be deemed a requirement at a later stage. And the success of a smart motorway, whilst it's going to take a long time to put in place, will take even longer to quantify. Services and amenities are limited at best for this area currently. Primary schools are near capacity, and there is no immediate GP service for the existing two estates. There's considerable pressure on the GPs that are soaking up those residents at the moment, and that ranges from feel right into Reading GPs. We are fully aware of the pressures that have been felt by South Park Lane, for example, across our board. As I mentioned, there is opposition from local residents, and this has been supported by the parish council. That said, Chairman, I do agree that there is a need for and the principle of a local development plan. I realise that without such a plan, we have no control whatsoever over where the homes will be built and the volumes that... will be built and the volumes that will be built. As has been said before, such a planning free-for-all cannot be allowed. We run the risk of homes being built, putting far excess of the volumes that we might need or be able to support. I will therefore support the DPD as a whole, but I will continue to oppose the development of EUA 025 and 26 at any future planning application hearing. I will also object to this site being included in the eastern urban spatial area and will abstain on the vote for that spatial area. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sumner. Councillor Bowick, please. You don't wish... No. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this is the first time for me that the duty to represent the views of our ward residents and the duty to be part of a corporate body acting in the best interests of Westbarkshire have come into stark conflict. Our Pearlie Ward has three DPD-allocated sites with another very close by, an adjoining ward. None of these sites is popular with the residents nor the affected parish council, and we have been asked by some residents to vote against the DPD. However, I have spent several months studying these sites very carefully, using the huge amount of information provided by our officers, and I've talked to local landowners as well. And I am now persuaded that in the long term, the situation for our residents would potentially be far worse without a strategic plan, and that these sites would eventually fall anyway with far less control over how they are developed. I therefore, albeit reluctantly, intend to support the DPD. But, Mr. Chairman, there are two huge caveats to this. Firstly, the council must require its planning officers to monitor and insist that all mitigation measures that are proposed in the DPD that have come from landscape assessments and other studies are fully included in any applications brought forward to protect these environments. And secondly, I'd like to reinforce my eastern area colleagues by saying, as the parish council has said, that Tilehurst is full. And the residents' main concern is, I believe, that it cannot sustain population growth without significant additions to infrastructure, namely GP surgery capacity, highways capacity and access to leisure facilities. The council must therefore, as a very high priority, include these things in its infrastructure delivery plan.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Councillor Edwards, please.
Thank you, Chairman. As a Newbury member, there are two major developments in Newbury. The first one being the racecourse, which is currently being constructed and some of it is already occupied, which indicates that these developments are necessary. The second one is Sandelford, which is currently being validated by our officers and eventually will come up for consent. Now, these constitute something like 2,500 houses and a further thousand in the future. As there is a shortfall in our overall numbers, Newbury and Thatcham, both prosperous growth areas, have to take their share of future development, and these are identified in the DPD. Other areas in the west, north and east of the district have been identified for housing development, and it's necessary for all these sites to be included in the One District Plan. Otherwise, the inspector, having seen all the evidence, may well consider that we haven't enough housing and may well impose housing on us, which we would not want. I can understand why residents are miffed about developments appearing in front of them where they haven't before. I was very miffed when my gymnasium and leisure centre was sold off for housing. Nevertheless, there is a consultation period after this when the residents, like they have now before, have the opportunity to register their objection, and these will be considered by the inspector. But it's necessary that this plan is approved tonight, and I will certainly support it.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. Councillor Franks, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support the proposal for the council to adopt this DPD for additional sites which will be added to the agreed local plan. Without it, we will leave the power with the developers and the landowners to decide where housing is proposed. The risk of this has already been seen across the district recently with applications, often for large numbers of houses seen in the east, in Thatcham and in the ward I represent. All major political parties have agreed there is a housing crisis and have signed up for the campaign Homes for Britain. More houses are needed of all kinds, affordable, private rent and for open sale, to support the economic viability of Westbarkshire and the country as a whole. Everyone in this room lives in a house that sits on what was once a greenfield. So now is not the time to lie down in front of the bulldozers. There will be an opportunity to object or comment to individual sites when and if planning applications are submitted. Strategically, for the future of Westbarkshire and its current and future residents, it's right to support this DPD. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Franks. Councillor Lundey, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I hadn't intended to speak this evening as a councillor, but I think as leader, albeit as outgoing leader handing over to councillor Croft later this evening, I think it's important that the leader of the council speaks on such a vital issue. Normally, when we speak in council chamber, that side is absent. It's the biggest crowd I've ever seen come to a council meeting. I think it shows the debility of making these kind of decisions. Our members, many members tonight, are very conflicted, and we structured this vote to give that opportunity to express that conflict by looking at spatial areas but also by looking at the DPD. As leader of the council, I will be supporting all the spatial areas and I'll be supporting the DPD this evening. I want to start by saying thank you to councillor Law for his opening remarks and the way that he's clearly explained the challenge that we face, and also thank councillor Cole for the work that she's done over the last few years, bringing the DPD to this stage. It is very necessary. But, Chairman, I'd also like to thank the members of the public here tonight. I'd like to thank Tilehurst. I'd like to thank Lower Elway.
Lower Way.
Lower Way. You can tell enough of Thatcham. And I'd like to thank everybody else that's turned up this evening, because this is the start of the process. It is not the end of the process. We are all very sympathetic. Many of you that look at a councillor sitting here today, once upon a time they sat there, and the only reason they become involved in politics is because of the dissatisfaction and frustration of how decisions get made, and you've seen that difficulty this evening. Now, Chairman, many of the debate that members will have given and that members of the public will listen to will have sounded quite arcane, five-year land supplies, spatial areas, but the reality is we all want the same thing, the right housing, given in the right way, so that we can all make sure we live affordable lives. And that is the challenge we have to meet this evening, and it's unfortunate that it's leading to such a debate, but you are not powerless in this debate. This is the start of the process. These are not planning applications we're bringing forward this evening. These are decisions on whether or not individual areas are developable. We've heard the number, it's a frightening number from developers. Developers tell us that number is 43,000. If we don't have a plan to protect ourselves, that's the number we're looking at. With this plan, it's a little over 1,600. So this is the start. Some of these areas may come forward for applications in the future, in which case they have to pass tests, the public have to help us form. Does it benefit my community? Has everything been done to minimise the harm this will bring forward? Does it bring the infrastructure that we need to make sure it benefits our community and it's part of our community? So come back and be involved. If you don't get what you want tonight, please remain involved to help us form how we respond to those planning applications when they come forward. I can look out tonight and see a lot of the community leaders that have done so much to influence this plan, even though they're not elected. I see Geoff Brooks from Thatcham, I see Alok Sharma, the Reading West MP, people who have helped drive out many of the areas that we are not coming forward with this evening, and that debate will continue. But I'll ask you all to put yourself a little bit in my position. I'm 47 years old, I have two young children. On the one hand, I'm trying to wonder where they're going to afford to buy in 15 and 20 years' time. At the other end of the spectrum, I'm wondering where my care home's going to be in 15 or 20 or 30 perhaps years' time. But that's the reality of the decisions we need to make. We have some great developments in Westbarkshire. In Thatcham, we have Alice Bycourt, the result of Careful and Study Planning. We have a need for care homes in the east. Those proposals will come forward in the years to come, but we must develop the infrastructure, develop our communities in the ways that will fit us. In our manifesto, we very clearly said we will be a plan-led authority. We will not be led by developers, not by Bovis and not by Blower, but by a plan that we think reflects the communities.
One minute, councillor Lundey, please.
If we want 43,000 homes being put forward by developers without our control, then let's not pass this motion tonight. If we think 1,600 is the number we should be working with, we must support it this evening. But my closing comment is to the members of the public. We ask that you come back, that you help us defend against the wrong applications if they are brought forward. Keep involved and keep engaged, and thank you for this evening.
Councillor Lundey. Councillor Law, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm from Mortimer Ward. My new colleague has spoken quite a lot about the NDP, the Neighbourhood Development Plan, and in Mortimer Village, not the ward, the village, we felt it was our right to decide where we wanted the houses to be. And this group of people, parish councillors and some other people from the village, have worked extremely hard to do this. We decided, and we felt, as I say, it was our right to choose where we wanted where we lived, the new houses to be built, and we didn't want them imposed on us. But my main reason of standing up here tonight, now much has been explained, is to 2.5. Mortimer Ward consists of five parishes. One of our parishes is Beach Hill, and I'll explain why I'm saying this. In 2.5.1, it's to do with the accommodation and finding land for travellers. There is a good site at Stocks Farm, Paces Hill, Alderaston, and that is a static, a permanent home site, and it also has transient travellers. In Longcops, that is in Embourne, there is a site which is specifically designed, it's a permanent site, but it's for the showpeople, the circuses and the travellers who are resting there at wintertime. But number three, it is a small site in Beach Hill, and I and the Beach Hill residents are very against this. It's an isolated site, it would almost be putting them right in a corner, and as we're going to have to vote on 2.5 as a block, I cannot support it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Law. Now, before I call on councillor Cole, have I forgotten anybody? Councillor Drummond.
Thank you, Chairman. I must say how disappointed I am here, being here this evening. Here this evening, it brings back a certain amount of déjà vu, takes me back to Sandelford decision, out and then again. No surprise with this Tory-controlled council. I am here tonight representing all the voters of Greenham who say enough is enough. We in Greenham have had over our fair share of housing developments. Councillor Bryant, your father-in-law, attorney, he's grave where people are alive tonight. With the racecourse, Sandelford, along with many other housing applications and developments, the roads are almost full now, it's back to the dark days before the Newbury bypass, not to mention the Burger King with the poison pumice on that roundabout. I have a copy of a section 106 agreement which states not to use the land or any part thereof otherwise than for open space, open air sports or leisure or any recreational purposes. 148 houses doesn't seem to fit this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Drummond. Right, councillor Cole, please.
Thank you, Chairman. We've listened to all the arguments for and against this DPD, but the bottom line is we have to have a plan. We are and always have been a plan-led authority. If we don't adopt this housing site allocations DPD, we will see developer-led planning by appeal, and that's already happened at the site in Burfield. If we have no plan, those residents objecting to proposals for 85 houses in Lower Way-Thatcham, they see Thatcham swamped with housing sites throughout the town. The same goes for Tilehurst. If we have no plan, developers won't stop at the sites proposed but will push to develop the sites we have rejected. So Pinsons Hill would happen and Tilehurst would no longer be green. I remember kicking this whole process off in January 2014. Our first community engagement workshop was held in Calcut with all the then ward members for Calcut and Tilehurst, as well as the parish councils, and there were many similar workshops throughout the district where the views of the community were heard and taken into account. The 3,000-odd pages of the background papers attest to the thoroughness of this consultation. So to say that we did not adequately consult is utter nonsense. I would also add that the consultations we've done was not a statutory requirement. We could have done, just presented the DPD as it is tonight without any consultation with any communities. Instead, we were very mindful of the views of our residents, which is why we decided to undertake this thorough and extensive consultation. And I have, and I know councillor Law has already said thanks to the staff, but it was also partly on my watch that these responses came in, and I know the hard work and the dedication that the planning policy team have put in to analysing these comments and presenting such a thorough job tonight. We've had a litany from councillor Macro requesting removal of a substantial number of homes for the DPD, which would negate the whole document. And I can understand members opposing sites within their own wards, but many of the comments made tonight are more relevant to being made at the planning application stage, and there seems to be some confusion in this respect. Tonight, we're here to determine a housing sites allocations DPD for the whole of the district, and this will include the delivery of the much-needed and vital infrastructure. And that is why we need a plan. To cover councillor Lock's point on 2.5, she referred to a site at Beach Hill. That is an area of site and not a proposal, councillor Lock, a search and not a proposal. And the houses in the countryside proposal is much clearer and it's very much to be welcomed. So, Chairman, I have great pleasure in seconding this motion because it is the right thing for the whole of the district, and that is what we have to bear in mind, members, when we're voting this evening. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Cole. Councillor Law, would you like to sum up now?
Chairman, thank you very much. We've had interesting, informative debate. Actually, before I close, I've got to thank you. Actually, before I close, I've got to thank you. I'd really thank the officers. I'd like to thank two of my predecessors, councillor Choppell, but also in particular councillor Cole, who did, if I can describe you, she did most of the heavy lifting on this, on this paper, this DPD. Thank you, councillor Cole. I said at the start of tonight, I said at the start, actually, tonight is all about who controls our future development, and we've heard that argued. Is it the elected members or is it going to be unelected developers or unelected appeal inspectors? But let me just address a couple of things. What have we heard? Councillor Macro says he's calculated that, well, we can remove a few sites, we can still meet the 10,500 core strategy number. Well, councillor Macro, we've moved on. We've got a new housing, strategic housing assessment, so it's not 10,500 anymore. And what fascinates me is you waited until tonight to present those calculations. I would like to, I've done that before so we can properly engage in the process, because I think your maths are wrong. But whilst we disagree, all's not lost for you. You have the opportunity at the next consultation and in fact, an opportunity to go to the next public hearing, the examination with the inspector, present your mathematics, your arguments, let him decide whether you're right or my officers and I am right. We've also heard from councillor Macro, we should have reviewed the employment land first. I'm not sure where he's coming from because we did, and in great detail, in the 2012 core strategy. I well recall, at the hearing we had, 2012, the Liberal Democrats criticised the then employment plan, and the inspector ruled against you in favour of the council. And we're going to do the employment plan again. We have to, starting very soon, for the evidence to support the next local plan. It will be like the housing assessment, a cross Berkshire. In fact, it's going to be called Cross Berkshire, a functional economic review, area review, led by the local enterprise partnership. The, I'm going to say, councillor Macro, you have a funny old-fashioned notion, and I know your colleagues share this, you have a funny old-fashioned notion that people who live in West Berkshire must actually work in West Berkshire. Well, that's not true anymore. If ever it was. I can tell you that 50% of our residents work outside the district. So we Conservatives are much more enlightened when we come to assess functional economic areas. And in fact, and in fact, the Labour Control, Reading and Slough councils actually agree with us as well. So as usual, Liberal Democrats are on a strange wing and a flare. But finally, I'd just like to address the people of Tilehurst and Thatcham who have turned up tonight in numbers. You know, if we didn't have to build the houses, we wouldn't. We've got to build them, we've got to put the people somewhere. We've got to, yeah, put them somewhere else. I understand. I understand.
Thank you. Could we please listen, please?
If I lived in, if I lived in Clementsmead, if I lived in Clementsmead or Lower Way, I'd probably be upset as well. I agree with you. But I'd be even more upset, but I'd be even more upset if my local council, West Berkshire, didn't have a plan. And let me tell you why, let me tell you how that means. Because in Clementsmead, instead of 35 houses per hectare, leave it without a plan, the developers will be doing 50, 60, maybe even 70 houses per hectare. And you'll, and you'll have no landscaping, and you'll have no screening, and you're going to have a lousy access off Salm Hill. Without a plan, that's what you get. In Thatcham, in Thatcham, no plan.
Yes, please listen to councillor Law, please, quietly.
In Thatcham, no plan would probably mean all nine sites that we looked at in the consultation would be developed. Now, think of that, think of the uncontrolled pressure on roads and schools that way bring. The key thing about having a plan, as my colleague mentioned, the key thing about having a plan is not just about houses, it brings the infrastructure. We get investment, it's planned for. So let me just close, Chairman, members, like make a plea to the people that, don't be too hard on your local councillors tonight when they vote. They probably don't, they probably, they probably don't like these individual sites any more than you do. But, but what they're doing by voting for the DPD is trying to protect you from something even worse. Chairman, I recommend the motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Law. Councillor Macro? Thank you very much.
Got to make a point of information, please, Mr. Chairman. The, my calculations, if those sites were removed, the objective needs assessment could still be met, just expire one year shorter than the council's own calculations. And also, could I also point out that I have been expressing my concerns about these various sites consistently in meetings of the planning advisory group. And finally, could I just say it's a shame that politics have been brought into this debate.
Point of information. I'm, I'm cutting it off there. Right, I'm now going to put this, we're coming to the vote now, thank you. We've had, I think we've had a full and frank discussion on this issue, and I'm now going to come to the various votes.
Mr. Chairman, could we have a name to vote, please?
I think this has been, we will be taking a block vote, and we will be.
Provided the people who voted.
And we will be noting all the names, councillor Macro, of those people who are against. Yes. When we go to the vote, members, could I please ask you so that we can take in councillor Macro's request that you keep your hands up so that we can see those who are for and when I ask those who are against, so we have time to make a note. Thank you. It saves going through every name one by one. So firstly, members, I'm going to ask you to vote on recommendation 2.1 on page 11 of your agenda. All those in favour, please show. Thank you.
Whether I need to clarify, because councillor Manaham, he was late.
He was.
My advice is that he doesn't vote.
Yes. Councillor Manaham, afraid, thank you. Okay. And those against, please. We're now going to vote on recommendation 2.2 on page 11 of your agenda.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, do we not need to count those who abstained?
Sorry, councillor Macro.
Do we need to count those who, sorry, do we need to count abstentions, Mr. Chairman?
Can't hear it.
Are you saying, do we need to clarify abstentions, so if we didn't, if anybody abstained?
We will clarify that if it happens, yes.
So for 2.1, did anyone abstain?
Well, it was only councillor Gohpal, who of course, couldn't allow to vote.
Garth abstained.
Garth abstained, thank you, okay. Right. Recommendation 2.2 on page 11 of your agendas, members, all those in favour. Thank you. And those against? Tony wants his name recorded.
He's got it recorded.
Yes, he's got it recorded. Thank you. Recommendation 2.3 on page 11 of your agenda, all those in favour, please. Okay. Thank you. And those against?
I think Leslaw has got his hand.
I don't know.
No, he didn't. I had Leslaw on, but it's the only abstentions. Did anyone abstain?
Thank you. Were there any abstentions on that one?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes.
I don't. And recommendation 2.4 on page 12 of your agenda, all those in favour, please. Yes? Thank you. And those against?
And abstaining.
Any abstention? Thank you, any abstentions?
No.
Thank you, members. Now, recommendation 2.5 on page 12, we will take on block, all those in favour, please show. Thank you, members. And against? Thank you. Any abstentions? Thank you. Now, 2.6 on your agenda, we will be taking those separately, so 2.61, all those in favour, please. Thank you, members. Against? Any abstentions? No, thank you. And 2.62, all those in favour, please. Thank you, members. Any against? Thank you. 2.7 on page 12 of your agenda, we will be taking on block, all those.
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt, can I ask that you read what that is? Point of information, can I ask that you read what it is that people are voting on? Because not all of the members of the public have access to the agenda, so it's important they know when it comes to the full DPD vote, what it is.
Right. This might take a minute or two. We are being asked to vote on 2.7, the West Berkshire Housing Site allocations Development Plan document, proposed submission documents are published in accordance with Regulation 19 of the Town and Country Planning, Local Planning, England Regulations 2012. A period of six weeks from the 9th of November 2015 to the 21st of December 2015 is allowed for the receipt of representation, representations on the housing site allocations development plan document, proposed submission documents in accordance with Regulations 17 and 20 of the Town and Country Planning, Local Planning, England Regulations 2012. And following this, the housing site allocations development plan document and accompanying documents are submitted to the Secretary of State under Regulation 22 of the Town and Country Planning, Local Plan, England Regulations 2012, and delegated authority is given to the head of planning and countryside to agree any minor typographical and represent, presentational changes to the proposed submission, DPD, and supporting documentation before publication. Could I see all those in favour, please? Thank you, members. All those against? Thank you. Any abstentions? Thank you. Then that proposal, I believe, is carried. Right, members. That brings us to the end of this meeting. Please don't run away because we have another meeting which will start immediately on conclusion of this. Actually, do we have time for five minutes? Actually, I think we do. We probably have time for a short comfort break of five minutes. I would like to thank all those members of the public who have come. Please have a safe journey home. And I now close this particular meeting.